We're going to open up our work session of August 18th, 2015. And if you'll please silence or shut off your cell phones. Join us in our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some additions to the agenda at this time. Forest Service slash cooperative law enforcement agreement and road vacation requests. Any other additions or deletions this time? If none, we'll move on. Nine o'clock is our first scheduled item, search and rescue emergency management update. Deputy Daniel Taggs, you're welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. So I'll start with emergency management, then we'll kind of roll into SAR if that works.
Step on up here for a quick hot seat.
Yeah.
All right, all right, all right. That way if they throw stuff at you, don't hit me.
Yeah.
Messy dogs.
So some of you know or may not know that we've got a half-time position through emergency management. We get about $3,000 or $39,347 a year. That's for the half-time position.
It's gonna work.
Yes. We're good doing it. So Lake County is also eligible for up to $65,000 if you want to go full-time. Now, one of the things I have to do every year is do a work plan. And that's outlined by Oregon Emergency Management saying, this is what we have to work on this year. And that's coming, that's dictated by FEMA. So it all comes together as one big plan. What they're requiring is NIMS compliant. And every year they come out with what's required for NIMS to make sure we're staying compliant and we check.
For the audience, define what NIMS is.
National Incident Management System. That's kind of the structure for ICS, Incident Command System, and how to, how we all work together in the big picture. So when disaster strikes, or the major fire, or the flood, or the airplane crash, it kind of outlines how we all work together. The other thing we have to do is keep our emergency operations plan current. We went through a massive revision here two years ago, and we've got that current, NIMS compliant, up to stuff. It's just now we're just going through and updating little sections of it at a time. We also have to identify a functional emergency operations center. And that currently is our search and rescue compound. That's our headquarters there. That's our primary. Secondary is Lake County Emergency Fire Center. So we have an established incident command structure. We need to update our jurisdictional hazard analysis. They want us to do that this year. Complete the NIMS assessment, which occurs in fall. They're identifying some potential, they call it PM, because of a program called Raptor. And it's a program that takes a snapshot of the United States and what's going on. It shows you where shelters are. It shows you where your current fires are, your earthquakes, your road closures. It just kind of takes all the incidents around the nation, plugs them in, and then as you zoom in, one more step pops up.
Now, when you say road closure, you mean like a catastrophic collapse of bridges and things, not just...
It shows the construction routes, too. I mean, when they're working on construction, it shows those just because people may be responding to something, and that shows, hey, this road's closed, don't go that way. So it's not just the major stuff. It's showing, when they do the seasonal closure up by Sisters, it shows that on there all year long. So it also has, last night it didn't happen, but before it had us, Lake County, all shaded because of our drought declaration. So it shows that stuff as well. So they want us to identify our potential partners that might need access to that, you know, our fire folks, public health, you know, anyone in public safety that might benefit from that, so. They also want us to update our statewide communications interoperability plans and our tactical interoperability plans, our radio plans. You know, we need to outline and identify our radio systems and what we're going to do in the future. And that all ties into getting grants later on. Because if you don't outline that, you know, you need digital capable radios, you want a P-25, then when you go apply for your grant, it says, is this outlined in your community com plan? And they want to make sure your radios are going to be working in the future. So. And then we mentioned we're going to update our emergency operations plan, ESF six and eight. That's just two sections we're going to update this year. One of them is public health, because Mary was getting that, some of those weren't like jive with her stuff, so we'll make that work with her. And then the other thing we have to do is every quarter, or every year, we have to do quarterly exercise and one full-scale exercise. That was what we did back in June with the active shooter. That was our full-scale exercise for the, for last year. This year, we're going to do a decontamination exercise with the hospital. And then some of the other drills we're doing is a functional exercise with another active shooter at the high school. Because we missed, a bunch of us missed the actual training part of it. They want to bring more of the school folks in. So that'll be a functional. And then we're also doing BOLA as a functional exercise. Earthquake has another functional exercise. Then we also got the Cascadia statewide exercise coming up in the summer.
That's going to be statewide exercise?
Yes. And they're trying to give as many as they can play. I mean, that's the big talk, is what we're wanting to do for a cascade event that's going to affect all of us. It may not be affecting us physically here, but all the people from the coast are going to be heading somewhere.
Those commodities coming into Lake County will...
Exactly.
Possibly.
So. And then, as mentioned earlier, no difference between half-time and full-time, there's absolutely no difference in your workload, the work plan. It's the same amount of stuff whether you do it half-time or full-time. It's just, here's the stuff you need to do this year. So all that full-time does is allow you to use that extra money for your program. So it's not requiring more work.
So what's the key to making that happen to any of us?
All we have to do is tell them you want to do it. That's it. For that actually funding. Yep.
And we've got to be cautious. It's not all about the money, the number of deputies we have for road crews.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm keen on, like, the workforce and everything.
Yeah, realistically, I mean, it'd be nice to have full-time, but it'd also be nice, even to do the work now. We're still not going to focus as much as we should be on emergency management, but you know, half-time, I mean, to give them half-time. I mean, it'd be good to have another guy to fill and control stuff, help with that. But there's nothing we need to do other than, you know, we stay as single and full-time and it's there. Also, the emergency management funding, here's where I start tying into the search and rescue stuff. The funding for emergency management will cover stuff for search and rescue. They won't pay for your searches, your costs associated with the search, like personnel hours for emergency management are covered for search and rescue. So meetings, training, all that's covered, so.
For one person, for the emergency management acquisition.
That's why a lot of the smaller counties, that person's the same person. Because Oregon Emergency Management is also one that oversees search and rescue. Because Oregon Emergency Management is also tied to the military department, who else is tied to search and rescue? So it kind of all falls under one of those sorts of...
So can you go back over that again? Because, you know, I think, I know I personally probably got me mistook, you know, Title III as it relates to our search and rescue program. So there's, there's funds available for all the on-search activities that lead up to searching?
Yes. So all for my person, all of my time, you know, SAR stuff can be covered under emergency management. So they will cover those systems.
What's the long-term sustainability of that?
They've had forever and continue to do, it's gone through FEMA. They do a, it's based off the population of your county, depending on how much money you get.
And what are all the things that are covered into that?
I don't have all the Title III stuff with...
Well, not the Title III, but the OEM.
They'll cover anything with search and rescue and then emergency management, which is everything from planning, or emergency operations plan, radio plans, the grants for that, anything that's tied to emergency.
But not the emergency preparedness related to equipment and...
Yeah, they, they won't pay for the equipment. There are some grants that come, they're tied to that, as long as we're NIMS compliant. We've been applying for homeland security money, and that's a pretty big pot of money. They generally don't want you applying for more than $120,000 to $150,000 a year. But they are also very forward-going for small, like, if you have a big project and you break it into my years, they've never had a project where they, it was a five-year plan, they didn't fund the first year, not the second. So if you're going to fund the first year, you're golden for the next couple of years for most part. And it's not a 100% guarantee, but...
So we're eligible to apply for those dollars now, where you're having?
Yeah.
So I guess, not take a side place, that's where we should apply for a mobile command unit?
Very much so.
That's...
And the, the homeland security grant selection committee is a couple of them have been raised for that already, so that's a great project. The fact that Lake County has not got homeland security grant in a very, very long time, if ever, what do we apply for a project with?
But what's the match for it?
Nothing. Nothing is required. It helps with the selection committee if you have some community buy-in. So if you're going for a $130,000 command post, $10,000 or $20,000 from your county folks, it would be great. What I would like to do for command posts is see if we can get some county funds to match, some Paul McDonald funds to match, and whatever else is out there to help fill in the community.
And does that go yearly?
Yeah, that's every year.
Every year?
So you apply for it, the grant opens up in February, and then the money is released after October 1st.
This is interesting.
I hope that's in a good way.
It is.
So far.
So far, yeah.
So on the talks, you know, I mentioned emergency management's not just the what-ifs. I'm not just here for what-ifs. There's, there's lots of planning that goes on in the background, lots of talking about counties, communities, other partners, and making sure those relationships are there.
That's inclusive, well, to our south, more of a county.
Yes. Yep. And actually, we'll all get into the other parts where we cross state lines, we're helping other counties fairly often, and other states. So. And then we also have a local emergency readiness group. We meet, we'll meet almost every month, just because we're working on all these exercises and what we need to do. That group's also identified that we're kind of lacking in the ICS part. Fires got it down, and we're trying to figure out, how do we train our, just our laypeople that don't understand ICS? How to get to it? And we've talked about bringing in some fire folks to help shadow them in our exercises to make sure we know how to do it, so. So that's a big hurdle that we'll work on, if we come in. I think it'll take us a year or two to do that.
So Daniel, you were primarily talking there about the logisticals function of ICS.
Well, just like some of the exercises we've had in the past, well, the first one we did at the hospital, we ended up with four incident commanders that weren't talking to each other. So lessons learned there. So it's like, yeah, here's what we need to do, so. So that's kind of what we're going with that. And the Title III funding, you know, that, I know we got some of that still, and I know they're working hard to keep and bring that back in and lessen some of the restrictions they put on that. I don't know where that's at. But, you know, through the Forest Service, we get some of that, you know, reimbursed back to us. I did talk to Ann to work on what we need to do to be able to reimburse some of our searches, because we've had, well, in February, we had a four-day search, Coors Mountain Snow Park, all on Forest Service. So that's completely reimbursable by Title III.
The Title III funds themselves, because the Forest Service...
Right.
Well, we have those funds as a result of SRS.
Yes.
And to go to the question on SRS for this next year that we, it's already been authorized, there will be no changes in the rules. That's, well, so it's actually not.
Well, they need a lease, but lease is not going away.
Well, it's not going away for this year.
And only valid every year, so...
Well, and did I, at Coors Mountain Search, did you not reimburse for that? Because the funds are held by our hard pressure. All we have to do is turn it in and get reimbursed for it.
Right, and that was the process I was talking to Ann about, what we need to do to turn those, we can turn those into most of the process for that.
Well, Ann's sitting here, but those are held here, so.
Those, I, we just need to look a little bit more carefully. It's quite possible a lot of those deputies charge their time directly to 234, our Title III funding anyway, so they were paid out of Title III funding. We just need to double-check that. But it's, they have a search and rescue line item on their timesheet. So if they're on a forested search or an emergency, they can charge their time directly to Title III.
And I flag the majority of the APs that come in as a result of that, and I charge them directly to 234, so it's not a reimbursement on that regard.
Yeah. Well, and that's, that's good to hear, because that's, you know, we've understood for the last few years that the, there's such a limited scope on how you can use those funds, and you have to have an active search, and then we have it. Everything that is related to that, that costs us money, should be charged to that.
And I talked to Ann the other day, we got some other documentation, so I asked her what else was reimbursed on the Forest Service stuff, because we had a pretty significant one-beam crash two weeks ago of a Mitchell monument. And we found out that those costs are also reimbursed to that, so, which I did not know.
No, I didn't either. I thought it was purely search-related.
Any emergency response.
That's good to know.
Yeah, any emergency response.
I, I guess what we're sort of saying, anything that could trigger that we could leverage those funds, make sure you have the system in place so you...
And that's why right now, I was working, the, the timesheets is, that part's taken care of. It's the, it's the reimbursement to the searches for costs associated with the search. You know, we lost a stinger on that easy search, you know, that needs to be purchased and reimbursed through that, through that fund. So it's just making sure we have the documentation to show you that. And that's what we're headed next. So, and that's all I have for emergency management, unless you guys have any questions.
Well, I, before you, I guess you're going to click that one?
Yeah, I got a couple, I've got up six things to talk about, I'm sorry.
Just, and, and some of this, you know, can be at a later date, Daniel, but what I've heard you say so far, and I'm trying to digest it all, we don't have potentially as big an issue with the, the rules around Title III as we thought we did.
No. It's just getting the processes streamlined, so we're getting the most paying-for-a-buck out of that money.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think we're missing those few dollars here and then that we...
Well, we've been advocating, just for, for clarity, that, you know, you can't have a search and rescue program unless you're authorized to spend dollars to, to have someone oversee it, to maintain it, to have equipment, et cetera. But what you've shared with us, it doesn't sound like that's as big an issue between OEM and Title III.
Right.
Okay.
And the problem with SAR stuff is, if searches are reimbursed, the problem is the equipment. And, and the funding streams to get that equipment, that's where the issue is. There's no big pot of money out there to get, to do the equipment. So, yeah, the command posts would go through emergency management, but they're probably not going to fund you four-wheelers, or snowmobiles, or, you know, a crew truck, or anything like that. So we're going to go another option for that.
Yeah. Well, we just need to limit the scope of what we request for the rules to, when they rewrite those, because they did propose rewriting among this last authorization. They said if that was done, they were going to throw that out of farm building that had been funded for the two years. So if we can narrow what our real needs are, I think that's going to be helpful.
Brilliant. So continuing on search and rescue, so in 2014, we had 1,820.75 man-hours. So we're running between 12 and 20 searches a year. Those aren't just local searches, those are also our Coors SAR searches, which I'll explain here in a minute. We currently have 38 volunteers. All of our search folks have to be ground certified through the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. There's certification, they have to main, it's about 40 hours worth of training. And then every year, they have to maintain 30 hours of continuing education for that. And that's just the basic folks to be out on the ground. I mean, you cover obviously mapping compass, GPS, patient tracking, evidence searches, basically all the stuff tied to walk on the ground. So...
30 hours training to stay updated after you're certified?
To stay certified, yeah.
And that's out of their pocket, or out of...
No, so, search and rescue, we have a training officer we designated. He actually came from Wash, from Alaska, where they're actually at the National Search and Rescue Standard, and he's done great, and keeps track of all the training, who goes along. Some of our outings, we invite families, because that's one way to recruit the kids and be part of the group. And he even keeps track of what the kids are doing, so sometimes when they turn 18, they've already done their training, and here you go, so.
But all of the training is local?
Most of it. Sometimes we've sent people to kind of fall, we've sent some folks out of state to some, to get some more specialized training. We sent Buck Magazine, and he was part of SAR. We sent him to a tracking school in Boise, where he actually got certified as a tracker through, we actually stand-up in court as well. So, so we sometimes send folks out of the area, but generally, that basic training's all done right here. So we do it in the spring, and we do an academy, and it's an outing, it's a overnight deal up to somewhere, so.
I used to be with search and rescue when I was in Oak Ridge, when it came up with that 40 hours and so forth. They pretty much disbanded us because we, individually, as volunteers go.
Correct. And it makes it hard. So the teams we have, we always have ATV teams, we have a horse group, even though we need more horse folks. We've got a canine air-sent dog. We got three pilots, part of our SAR group. We have a ropes team that we formed three years ago. You know, we got snowmobiles, we got snowcat. You know, we got our folks that help us with the search management command posts, and we've got several hand-regulated officers. So we've got quite the contingency of folks. The 38 of us, other counties say, we're small, but we're very mighty with capabilities. So. The ropes team, it's a high-risk, low-frequency. You know, we're called out very often, but when we formed that team, I told them, I said, it's high-risk, low-frequency. You guys need to maintain at least one day of training a month. And they've done that for three years. Last year, paid off on a rope rescue, a crack in the ground. They were actually training that day. And then they just got home, and the call came out. They went to SAR, they were escorted by sheriff's deputies up to the crack in the ground, code 3, so they go. The guy fell on the crack in the ground, busted skull. Airlink was on the ground, our team showed up, we pedaled down. We also had some RNs and paramedics, part of our team, and that is what we're going to afford, so. So search and rescue is governed under ORS Chapter 404. That book gives us the authority to do what we're doing. It's plugged into the sheriff's department, it's the sheriff responsible for all search and rescue activities in the outdoors. So that actually became an issue three years ago in the Valhalla Valley with water rescue, between fire departments and sheriff's office. Attorney General had to give an opinion on whose it actually is. So that was an issue, but they resolved that. To me, the bottom line is whether they're going to save a life or not, who does it. That also is the chapter that allows us, if we so pleased, to land a helicopter in all this areas, without approval of forces. Now, my philosophy is, I turn like to play nice, and I would call the discrepancy, this is what we got, I'm pretty sure, so go ahead and land, so. And then I mentioned Title III, but we already talked about that. And then Coors SAR. So Coors SAR is California Oregon Regional Search and Rescue. Coors SAR was formed as a result of Governor, Governor's order from 2006 from the KIM search. That was in Josephine County, Golden River Bear Camp Road. That was a search that went haywire, people are not talking to each other, people are not sharing resources, and you guys got to figure this out. So they formed Coors SAR, and now that's nine counties. It's Delmar County, California, Siskiyou County, California, us, Clayannis, Jackson, Curry, Josephine, Coos, Douglas.
You didn't do Modoc, did you?
We've tried recruiting Modoc. Modoc has a posse, that guys that know the local area, but they're not really up on the SAR stuff. Part of that's the sheriff came from California, had to join, and it's new to him. Their undersheriff came from Siskiyou County, who was the SAR coordinator there, that's how I first met him. And he's, they're trying to bring SAR along, but they haven't yet. They haven't used ours a few times to come into their county and help. So we've tried recruiting Modoc, we would love to have them. Shasta County's actually wanting to join the group.
Wouldn't get it lost, they can't tell if it's Oregon or California, down here 14 miles away. Is there East by a house?
So, and then with this Coors SAR group, we've been doing it since about 2007, 2008. I think Lake County joined about 2009, 2010, something like that. And the state has kind of looked at what Coors SAR has done, and then they've regionalized the rest of the state, trying to do what Coors SAR is doing. It's working for everywhere except for the Northeast. They're still having trouble getting together and doing it. And then other states are looking at what Oregon's doing with this regionalization, just because of the sharing of assets and paying on. So we've done, I think we've had four Coors SAR searches in our county, and then we've sent our folks all over the place. We sent them to Josephine County on a search one day, and they got in so late and they were so wiped out, we put them in a motel room for the night. Next morning, 6:30, they were heading out to White City, and I called, I said, where you guys at? And they said, well, I'm at White City. And I said, well, we got in a search, Coors SAR call, Jackson, and our team actually moved Jackson County to their own search, so.
So are our Title III dollars available, be leveraged in some of the forest, but it's not free moment, you know?
I would think yes. That's a national program, it doesn't, it's not forest-specific.
Well, when we do the allocation, though, we leave the issues out of our allocation, so. Just curiosity, all my years have run through that, but...
It says national forest events, so it doesn't say within your county.
Well, we should have records on that, I would think, because of the coast, of our concept, we, when we get in mobile commands from other places, and all these people are charging us something. And obviously, from our available funds, they're probably charging to their own counties, search and rescue, Title III.
A lot of times, these people are volunteers, and so there's really no personnel cost, but the cost of the search is what's charged. So when we bring something in, we're paying the aviation fuel, we're paying the food, we're paying all those things out of that Title III. So it's probably similar. If, if search is somewhere else, our people might be going there and volunteering, so the cost is not for personnel, it's just for logistics.
Yeah. And that's, well, one of the things, our folks, the biggest cost, I think, for our volunteers, though, is the fuel. And that, that, I mean, generally, me and my dogs pick up for SAR, that's the one, that's county fuel, so that's kind of our help, manual help discounting, it's what this cost to us. So sometimes I go to help other counties, sometimes I don't, don't know what's going on, and what they ask for. You know, if they ask for overhead help, I need to see if I can go and help. If they don't, we go ahead and help, I stay put, so. Any other search and rescue questions? So I'll play this video, in 2013, we posted, on the, every summer we do a summer exercise, we call it Summer X. In 2013, we posted it. The cost for this exercise was about $12,000. At our Summer X, we actually had the search and rescue clinic from Pacmas County come down and look at it, because we're concerned about how good Summer X is. Pacmas County does a SAR con in October every year. It's costing them $150,000, and they're wanting to know, how are we dividing the training? We're dividing at such a reduced rate. So this training is free to everyone, families and the volunteers. It's just the hosting county paid for it. After this year, we had some other counties wanting to host it that couldn't afford it, so they decided each county contributed $1,500 to the pond. So we kind of changed the way this thing is paid for. But still, for the amount of training, $1,500 is really, so. And then, just to give you guys a heads up, this was the year Leon Flit passed away, one of our very active search and rescue members. He was helping us get ready for this when he was diagnosed, and passed away thereafter, so.
One special man came to prepare good food and enjoy meal with friends. One special man came to drive a wagon with a team of horses to carry children and to share with them a little bit of nature. One special man came to spend the last of his precious time with good friends and share a pond or two. One special man left for home with cherished memories.
California Oregon Regional Search and Rescue, or Coors SAR, consists of county, state, federal, and private organizations. These agencies are dedicated to helping preserve lives by working together to provide and coordinate personnel, equipment, education, training, and effective delivery of services within the Southern Oregon and Northern California region. These agencies are dedicated to helping preserve lives by working together to provide and coordinate personnel, equipment, education, training, and effective delivery of services within the Southern Oregon and Northern California region. In June of 2013, close to 200 highly dedicated search and rescue volunteers from nine counties came together to participate in the seventh annual Search and Rescue Summer Exercise Training Event held in the mountains of Lake County, Oregon. In this beautiful rural area of Southern Oregon, yurt-style classrooms were assembled. ATV courses were constructed. Horses corralled, generators powered up, radio repeaters deployed, registration was staffed, a souvenir store opened, vendors set up for sales, and command posts were staged. The logistics of setting up a field camp for such a large group was a monumental task in itself. Summer X is more than classroom training and field exercises. It's an opportunity for search and rescue team members to share ideas, expertise, and develop camaraderie, all of which plays a vital role in promoting teamwork in the field during search and rescue missions. The five-day schedule was packed with field exercises as well as classroom instruction. The highlight of this event was the off-field search with dozens of ground searchers, canines, ATVs, mounted saw, divers, rope teams, medical extraction teams, overhead personnel, and air support, searching literally hundreds of square miles of primitive backcountry for missing subjects.
The whole thing's not playing through this house. You have a question for me on the repelling and scuba diving? Does the state have a cadre that try to train us or how does it become from a patient?
So scuba diving, there's the, what is it, the PADI certification? And we use Highland County's dive team. Up until recently, we never had dive in part of our team. We've got some folks on our end, I still always talk about combining something with Highland to join teams because they're lacking in numbers as well.
And the repelling?
The repelling, so we are still the only, we have a standard for Lake County. We follow the NFA standard to a point. The problem with the NFA, the National Fire Protection Association, that's for repelling out of buildings. So they're packing steel hardware, carabiners, figure eight so to speak, which that works great for working off the highway, not so good when you're hiking them to gear hard. So we're adopting the NFA standard, but we're also making exceptions for that country stuff.
But who's doing the training?
So we have done some training outside the area with an outfit out of Southern California we've done some training with. We've also, John Pontius does all sorts of training with ropes and cave rescue. He's actually one of the only nationally certified cave rescue instructors out there. And he's kind of what's brought Corsar along. So we've brought him over here to do some training and we've sent our folks to the counties to train with him. Any other questions?
I don't know if I can read that.
These highly professional rescues are non-profit organizations that train based on hundreds of volunteers for the rapid, safe, and effective rescue of lost or missing persons. They are ready to respond to any event 24 hours a day, every day. Search and rescue volunteers are always prepared for more than just on-site rescue techniques and so that others can also.
I'm a little concerned with the way you mentioned that the states start first of all and so forth tomorrow. I'd like to see the question again, is there a nationwide national operations department that's where, and if you broke down everything, which is a part of it, probably only, you know, built up for by standard, you know, paratone, so they've got a plan, they've got a program, use for new fire evacuation, 3.5 fire, one exactly, get ready, build a cap, go scroll around it, and it's going to put all the cell phone in the house. So we look at the cost of about $4,000 to kind of create that program.
Most of our members locally here in Southern, I think we have a cadre of.
We have, we were discussing, so we're trying, form a kind of, we have a couple folks that are, and then we call them out. And then I have some folks joining, a partner, for example, that's all, and look out. We have a force, we have a force to be involved, force to play, you have a frequency, you need to respond to. If it's time for that, we have folks that are interested. I have some folks that are better, you know, I mean, especially that. They're very small, they're tired, they call us, they give them time, they have some time.
And I'll follow up when I ask them, is, yeah, maybe we're going to do that. So listen, if you have good opportunity, tell us how often your meetings are, evenings, day?
So we meet the third Thursday at 6 o'clock every month. That's our business meeting. They're doing training, you know, we're doing the ropes thing once a month, and then we're doing other training as needed. I mean, we do a winter and a fall exercise, a weekend outing type thing where we focus. During the spring is the academy where we're focused on getting people certified, or if people are missing just one or two things to get that wrapped up. In the fall, we kind of focus on specialty, or we'll have all the specialties, go out and do their stuff, and then we'll get together and do a mock search.
So meetings, you have to make so many per year?
Six of them.
Six? Fifty percent of meetings? Does that, do the meetings add up to a forge of 30 hours for continuous certifications?
It depends. We have started throwing in, our meetings are down to about 45 minutes long. So we started doing agendas and just making it streamlined. Or we've gone to doing some sort of 30 minute training at the end, so that does come. So, and we also count our actual searches this time too. You're doing the real thing, so.
Well, it's so tough with volunteer organizations, it doesn't matter if it's search and rescue or it's a lot of other organizations.
And we're in the process of revamping our buy laws because they're kind of require this, require that, and require so many of each. And I might just put it on a point basis for hour for hour, require so many hours, it makes it easier that way. So we just want people to be active.
Other questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys good?
I'm fine for right now.
Okay, our, we'll move on in our agenda. Our next item is Highland County Building Fiscalidae. We have Jennifer here. This is a re-visit because we.
They wanted to.
We agreed actually.
Yeah, I mean, when I went to Highland County Board of Commissioners, they wanted to have an expiration stated on it. Even though it's 10 years from now, but that's fine.
So this on our agenda for tomorrow has another item?
It is.
It is, okay.
Ms. Jim Bayley, you care?
So the only difference is, is that they run with a timeframe instead of just being upon 9th.
Yeah, and then they also, on, under consideration, 5.6, consideration of disagreement will be negotiated annually by both parties.
Okay, so that, that's where it would trigger if there's a cost level increase or anything like that?
Yep.
All right. Jennifer, are you ready for the phone call?
Not very.
We contract with Highland County Court of Building Official and our inspectors. And this is just a renewal of that treaty.
This is just a renewal of the building official duties and all inspectors.
I'm bored having the other questions. Thank you for your patience. We'll act on it tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, budget resolution. And others, I'm sorry?
So as you know, the budget is a living, evolving document. So periodically, when there's a need to expand more than we have appropriated or have authority for, we do a reservation to allow that to happen. So today you have two resolutions before you. The first is for the Sheriff's Department. As you're aware, they have multiple capital projects going on at one time. A lot of them are around technology. They've got new software they're looking at and are in the process of updating that software required connections to other buildings and other systems. And then they looked at installing technology in their vehicles. So all of these things have moving parts, multiple people involved, multiple timelines. And so the capital authority left for this fiscal year is not enough to complete all of those projects. Because it's so early in the year, my only option at this point in time for keeping this budget balanced is to go to contingency. If we were later on in the fiscal year and we could see that there were perhaps savings in salaries or materials and services, or somewhere else, we can make that resolution occur then that way. But right now, as they, these projects are going, we're paying them, contingency was my best option. I think undersheriff Hubble might want to add a little bit more to the project.
The only thing I'll add is that the project is approximately 97, 98% complete right now. We've just got a few IT things that we're working through right now. The APAC is helping us with some VPN issues with the, the connecting virtual private networks because all of the MDT units and the vehicles actually will have a direct line of connection to this building. And so there's some CEGIS requirements that we're trying to kind of work through. You know, it's a new philosophy for Lake County, and so we're having to somewhat reinvent the wheel here because of our unique infrastructure, if you will. But we're very close to being complete on that project.
Now, Paul, I think we talked about this quite a bit. You have identified some areas where you thought you could have had savings and would have had to do a resolution from one category to the next, but in the capital line item. But this would be the way you'd rather go right now. And you just mentioned you'd rather go to contingency than to get us all related here.
I think so. There may be monies that can be, that could absorb this cost later on in the year, but I hate to hamstring the budget right out of the gate.
And we talked about that.
And so I, I think that this is probably the best way to go for right now. That is why we have contingency.
If there are savings in those other categories, the net effect at the end of the year is the same. There's nothing.
Well, contingency is designed for emergency, is what it's really designed for. So the net effect, I agree, but if there's some type of emergency comes up, we need a contingency then, when we do it earlier. As long as, and everybody here knows that you go from category to category of fire resolution and all that. Because later on in the year, we'd probably be going to, yeah, we should do a contingency.
I read the letter. I can follow the letter. I didn't have the opportunity to talk to the undersheriff, so I am, I'm totally understanding how we got to where we got, but I'm also a little bit concerned about in August spending 20% of contingency.
If it were November, it might even have other options for you. You know, our revenue, primary revenue streams come in in November. So it's just the timing of this need. You got, like you said, we're 98% finished with this project, we are paying it. And so budget law, the intent is to have the authority in place before the expenditure occurs.
So. So if we did look at some, at least part of this, where that department says they could take something here or there, we could do a part of the resolution from category and then maybe not hit contingency quite further for 30, 39, or 39.5. I don't want to hamstring your budget either, Paul, but we, we had pretty deep conversation. We had a couple of them that seemed like they were considerable, you could consider.
I could propose that right now, we can go to contingency on this, and through the course of the year, if we have to go to general fund contingency again, at that point in time, I can do a resolution. If we see that there's savings, we can make those changes then too. So we can go back to contingency over time if we find that that is available to us. If that's a resource with.
So if we, later on?
Yeah.
Would we finish contingency?
We absolutely could, yes.
Contingency is experimental budget and we identify a still plus?
Yep. We see some revenue streams that are positive, we see some expenditures that we see savings in, yes, we could go back and replenish contingency if that, because it's available. Yeah.
Paul, just for the audience, always point to the camera because that is our audience, can you go through the different project specific, just for your voice and?
Well, it all started with a single project that turned into multiple, multiple layers of which I was handed this project in December and have a lot of knowledge on it. So the sheriff's office purchased some software that is to improve work productivity. It allows the guys to do their reports on the vehicles. It updated and upgraded the jail management program that we were using. It's approximately 12-year old. That wasn't ever designed to do what we'd been doing with it. So it was a well-needed upgrade. We also upgraded the civil portion that will allow the civil deputy to process and track civil stuff much, much cleaner and better. We added a pre-book portion that allows anyone with internet access that's authorized to basically do their jail booking paperwork prior to arriving onsite with them. It's trying to streamline that process and the accuracy of the data. You won't have to redundantly enter data. So that's the way the project started off. We learned that we had a need for 10 units for the vehicles, and originally we had only requested three. So we made a severe modification of that. Well, with that came 10 docking stations for the vehicles. If you can't dock at a vehicle, it doesn't do you much good. And so we put 10 of those in vehicles versus three of those in vehicles. In the middle of the project, we learned that our data connection between emergency 911 and Lake County Courthouse was very antiquated, I guess would be the best way to put it. And so we had to switch gears and look at back connection before the project even go live. So we had to put out RFPs for that. We received three quotes and made selection. You guys approved that in a public meeting. We got that off the ground finally. We had to wait about a six week delay on that because of parts coming out of Europe that is very significant for the system. We got that in place. Then we had two and a half weeks of onsite training that was provided by VIS, which is the software vendor that we went through. They got everybody kind of up to speed on that. We, also, we had to purchase a number of different hardware components that were unknown. New servers, some VPN switches that were in place, but with us adding 10 virtual private networks, we maxed out the switch. So we made a decision to put 250 switch, or 250 port switch in for future growth, and that was absorbed within this project. There was a few other things along the way that were, they were kind of that unknown. And they added to these, these costs that we had to cover. So that's, virtually, that's the position we're in today. The, like I said, the work is pretty much complete. Every bit of the hardware is onsite and in our possession, and now it's just a matter of some IT tech. And now it's just a matter of some IT technical stuff that's going on behind the scenes to establish that connection and comply with CEGIS requirements.
And this, the switch you talked about, you didn't have the capacity. So the switch, it's more than just for your usage for other county operations also.
I believe the switch that...
It has the capacity for others.
Yeah.
But in IT, which is what you said, there's no need to switch either. So it fell into this also.
And there was some confusion on my part and probably some other parts on where some of these costs were to come from. We, we purchased computer hardware that I made an assumption that it would come from our IT and it didn't. It had gotten absorbed in this project. And then the docking stations for the vehicles, I thought were part of the vehicles, which we build the vehicles out of vehicle funds. So I didn't know that that was a part of this as well. And so...
Well, and we, we approved to go with all ten instead of three.
Correct.
Mr. Smith's and last budget years that made it happen. And that if you paid them last budget year, you'd have given this budget year. So at the end of the time, that wasn't carried forward.
Correct.
So there's multiple, multiple things that...
We can project the office with re-computer efficient, communication efficient.
Yes. Which was a good thing. I think product...
Well, I would like for you, Paul, to state again about the record reporting. Because that's a big deal when you have a county the size of ours as far as doing field reports as opposed to the question, why do we have deputies from wherever we're coming in and they do the reports here now? So we're going to have the ability to be in Summer Lake and do the report there and save those miles that time, that gas.
Absolutely. And there's, so that's one of the benefits. And they're not solely reliant on cell service. These have their own separate air cards that are built into the machines. And part of the docking station installation is a booster on all the vehicles. And we haven't got to put one of those in a car and go test it yet. But at least in theory, you're probably going to be able to utilize this where you can't even begin to use a cellphone due to the connection. It'll also have, there's some really neat safety features. There's some GPS capabilities that rely on satellite and don't have anything to do with cell. And so if we have a deputy that gets stranded out in the middle of nowhere and can't access his radio, he can't use a cellphone, we can track him from dispatch based on that GPS coordinate. The sheriff and I can use it also as a, as a audit tool on where people are at, wherever they're spending their time. At any time from the desktop, I can pull up a map and see where Deputy Taggs at. I can see that he's in Pine Grove. I can see that he's in the Warreners. I can see that he's out at Gear Hard. It is that precise. And so I look at it from an officer's safety standpoint, but I also look at it from a audit tool of the management. Why were you there for seven hours? Well, this is what I'm doing.
But you also identify gaps.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so, but the, the big key to it is, is that they're going to be able to do roadside reports when, when able. You know, if they're out working a speed enforcement grant and they're sitting there, you know, in a construction zone, they can look at their radar and they can be typing a report right there in the vehicle.
Well, and you gave a really good overview, Paul, of all the aspects, which I think is great. The sheriff chatted with me a number of months back about this. I know the daily cost of upgrading a vehicle. So I can appreciate the savings we should generally, should see as a result of this.
I think it'll be a long term. I don't think that instantly you're going to see that you save, you know, a huge dollar amount. But over time, I think it will be very beneficial.
Next resolution, Ann, twenty fifteen oh seven.
Yes, this one maybe feels a little bit more positive. Public Health received additional Cover Organ grant funding. The way Mary explained this, this date, basically it was seventy-five thousand dollars or nothing and they awarded this Cover Organ grant, so I think it was like four or six times. So she had budgeted for forty thousand five hundred. The new amount in total is seventy-five thousand for Cover Organ. And she will spend it in both salaries and in materials and services.
So questions like where veteran services got anticipated rather than was able to reduce the general fund contribution? This one here, could they reduce the general fund contribution?
No, because she actually has to increase her hours for people to spend those dollars out. This, the, I think the contract is in front of Jim Bailey at this point in time. You see this Cover Organ contract soon.
So additional dollars, additional work?
Exactly.
Okay.
And is projected to be continuous or tested?
I don't think so. But I, I don't know that much. It's for this fiscal year at this point in time. I don't know about moving forward.
All right. Any other questions? Was that worth?
A little bit of clarification, just on Paul's and the, the idea that it's possible that we can spend some dollars in multiple areas. It's very true. The, trying to follow department costs and accounting rules and things like that and transparency, it's nice and we need to try and show costs where they're incurred for the departments that they're supporting. So as staff changes here and there, every now and then you get a, you know, it can vary. I understand that it's great. But if there's a project that really truly specifically supports one function, we need to strive to pay for it out of that one function. So if it's, if, you know, someone else can't use the equipment generally, it's not generic enough for all county staff to use, then we need to look at one program or one function paying for that cost. So that's the goal. That's where we've been trying to move for a long time. That's why we have all these departments set up and we have funds set up and things like that. So sometimes we need to show costs in multiple areas. But if, if we can avoid that and it's specific to one function, we're trying to show it there.
This is a capital line item that's short. So there's multiple capital line items. One oh three does cover line items too. You know, it's capital purchase for the county's capital purchase.
Right. And if it's general IT, it's general IT, it's this building and it can be used by multiple people over time, then it's kind of general. So if it's Sheriff Riggs, I bet you don't want me driving that home at night. That would be really fun. Shouldn't be...
Probably not, but we have one we check out on every Friday.
Yeah, I kept it over the weekend last week.
And one other quick thing, I, I was going ninety miles an hour and I forgot. But another added part of that software program that we implemented is CSP, which we have not, we have not streamlined it yet either. It's a web-based program, but it's, it's a citizen portal. So our citizens around the community or around the county for that, basically for that means, can log onto there. And if they have these certain types, it, it has quite a narrow criteria, but certain types of calls that are nuisance calls, if you will, for the person, not for us. I mean, it's not a nuisance when somebody calls. But if it's a nuisance call for them, that they would just like an officer to know about it or a deputy to know about it, they can log into this and they can generate a personal statement saying, "My neighbor's dog never quits barking," or "This happens," or, you know, just FYI, I'm going out of town for the next two weeks. Can you please keep an eye on my property? And that, that will generate a, a kind of a ghost case number. And it will actually send a report to our agency telling us that Ann's going to be out of town for two weeks and she'd like us to keep an eye on her place as she's gone. Or her neighbor's dog is chasing her livestock every day. Or, you know, whatever the case may be. But there's, there's some criteria there, you know, that is going to make it very convenient for the public so that they don't have to come in and do one of our voluntary written statements. They can do it right there online and most everybody has internet access anymore, so.
And citizen Joe out there will know about this. How?
We're going to publish it. We're, when it's, when it's what we want as a product because it's a work in progress. And it may change from time to time as we find that we need to add something to it. But we will publish that through the media and we'll put it on the county website. We'll put a hyperlink to where when they go to the sheriff's page, it will be a hyperlink right there and they can click on it. And it will just go directly to that portal and they can, they can, I mean, it's very self-explanatory once you open it up and actually look at it.
And you say you notify the media.
Yes.
About the Lake County Examiner?
The Examiner.
Desert Whisper?
Yeah.
Can it raise? It's an annual three-point five. I'm at five-point three, I'm at five-point eight.
With that, with that, we're going to take about a five-minute break.
Let's go play with Paul. This, we need to be able to just allow deputies to use some mobile dispatch so they can check out the residences without having to go to the private security purposes.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thanks, Ann.
After ten, our next item is remodel of industrial park. Alamos Gold is having a remodel there. Mr. Berman, he gave us all the pictures.
Yeah, I gave you a set of plans and... Some pictures of the industrial park. Alamos Road, twelve fifty, they're wanting some office spaces built. So they, they kind of started and they kind of put a whole lot of... They're, they're just wanting to add, they're growing as employees in there. They just kind of needed more of a meeting room and they needed another office. So they, above there, on the existing, they want to put some offices above the existing rooms that are there.
So it's not really taking up any floor space per se?
No. The, the floor plan is already there. Whatever was there is existing. And they just wanted to add. The structural of the building we put is structured with sound to put offices above it. That's other things we need to look at. Before, before we let them move ahead, make sure, I mean, that they have been in the code.
So they're compulsed, if I'm not mistaken, as they put all the cost out. They do all the work to the code, public building official says. And they won't be asking for any rent reduction, any cost recovery, any ARs.
It's all, if they decide to give their notice to move out, it all stays there. There's no cost to the county at all. And we have an agreement that we'll sign on that. Same thing, I already got legal right on that. So we're just waiting for all this to move forward and then we'll sign that agreement. We can do it well, same in Texas, they can't take it out. Same deck, they can't take it out.
Yep. So this is on for, uh, for tomorrow. Is this something I consented that we could just go ahead and get it done over with and worry about? What I'm thinking is, I guess, we're going as long as it's built to the code, passes all the regulations. Official says, we get the agreement that there's no cost to the county. It exists in writing.
It's actually a plus tomorrow. It'll be a benefit to us along, it'll just help us kinda open our, you know, without one room for different.
So, so when's Legal Counsel gonna have that?
I already have it.
Oh, you've got it back from?
Uh, four months ago, they talked about building a, uh, we're out, or a shed outback, but he wrote that up saying by doing this, if you build it, it stays in Lake County's owner. So, so, I already have, we just have to be decided.
So I, I think after my thought there, maybe we better make sure that everybody in the county will act on it.
Yeah.
Or.
So what, what do you want?
Well, we need to have a copy of that agreement. We can talk about, make sure Legal Counsel says it fits this public also. If we can officially act on it tomorrow, because it is, we probably should get by a motion that the court decision, since it's a, everything is now basically on this, actually. Sorry, we're, I'm sorry. Well, I'm coming tomorrow. So additional information we need would be a copy of that agreement.
Specific to this major project? I don't remember what the other agreement said, Dave, I just know we signed it, but I don't know if it was all inclusive of any new facilities we approved.
I'll be, I'll be, I don't think they're gonna find though.
No, we never signed it, we never brought any, I said, but they never built the building outside, maybe it's not being signed.
Okay, so, a little more information tomorrow, make sure Legal Counsel is on board with that agreement and a specific to this.
Okay. All right. And then I wanna give you a quick update, if it's okay with the email. We have change order, no cost change order to.
Talking about the, uh?
Remodel here, have a completion date, they pushed that until September 10th. It's no cost change order, of course, it's just we had some delays on doors and windows, so we put a change in. Completion date is September 10th.
So on major project like that, we probably should approve that, because the date before is end of, it was August 1st, August 1st for completion.
Well, it was ninety days to sign the contract with the, on this, so there are paths to have this completed. So he puts a change order in two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. Um, I believe, on a major project like that, they're gonna have to publish it through that, especially.
And the reason for extension is to, to supply, getting the materials in, doors in.
Right, doors, I know there was a three, two weeks delay.
If we get a copy of the order before tomorrow, we better make the motion and have the order as part of the.
Correct.
Right. Do we have? So let's add that for tomorrow. Change order. That is true, that. And that's what the, right?
Right.
Any other updates? You're afraid you're gonna get more work in?
No.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Um, Mr. Greer, youth development grant.
Youth Development Council grant. Um, for you is a copy of that. Um, the total is for forty-five thousand dollars for the biennium fifteen seventeen, which accounts to, as you know, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar fiscal year of that, that accounts to the headwind costs area, which will improve ten percent, retain ten percent of that. Um, which leaves about ten thousand dollars or so, ten dollars in some change per fiscal year to go towards Lake County Mental Health and Lake County Mentoring. This is a providers grant and this is money that historically went through CCM, Commission Children's and Families. When that sunsetted and went away, the commission sunsetted and went away, it came to the Juvenile Department, so we administer those to, uh, Mission of Planes, Dr. Mary, yeah.
Yeah, I, I get that.
So, um, and what, what the money is used for is for prevention, for our youth mentors, it's all about prevention and Lake County Mental Health, they, it's just not Juvenile Department, it's youths, that mental health service itself is all the youth. So we need to report our stats to the Youth Development Council, they get our money, we incorporate all the stats from Lake County Mental Health countywide, there's also some assessments that go along with that, called the JCP Juvenile Crime Prevention Assessment, uh, the mental health, we'll be doing that, has to be. So, um, that's what that.
But you know my question in the past year, it was always before we say there was money towards youth investment, now general funds have to pay all of youth investment, um, how can this money can be used to offset youth investment?
There, there used to be a part of money separate from this for youth investment and that went away. They, they went, they sunsetted the whole youth investment cost and, uh, youth investment now went into open grants that you can apply for, unfortunately. Uh, we don't have a game problem in Lake County, um, and Kathy Miles and Youth Mentoring and I've talked about this, constantly we talk about this. So, we don't have a game problem, so we don't qualify for one of the grants. Our school, our schools, statewide, or countywide.
Okay, but back these dollars here, specific to these dollars, I know there is other youth investment.
Yep, this is specific to these providers.
Cannot be used over youth investment.
Can't use youth investment. So, um, our schools are, are doing a wonderful job, we don't have great, poor grade schools, so we don't qualify for many of the grants that Mobile County does, that Law School County does, because of game problems. So neither county. So, that's for the provided grant.
Now, you mentioned mentoring, the mentoring program with Kathy Miles.
Mm-hmm.
How would that interject with this?
Prevention.
Prevention. In addition and covering the mental health.
Yeah. So mental health is separate, so they, they, they do work together, I'm assuming? But, but mental health also serves a juvenile population that, and some of the, some of the youth overlap between mentoring and mental health, some of it don't. Some of the youth that are involved with mental health for the work of widening services don't partake in the mentoring program and vice versa. Some, some people take, some of the people partake in the youth mentoring program, but not, and we have our kids that get off, get over.
So, so some of this dollars goes to mentoring, does some of this goes to mentoring?
Yep. They didn't have the funds, so our forty-five thousand dollars for the biennium, Lake County can retain ten percent of that, so that's forty-five hundred. The remaining dollars are split to.
People.
People.
Okay. That's for us then.
Yeah, that's a really, Commissioner Casman doesn't really say that in, I can see.
It, it doesn't say that in there, but I had, I did a budget breakdown, that's just a grant fund. That's all the grant paperwork. I did a budget breakdown for Youth Development Council saying we would be taking forty-five hundred dollars of that, remaining forty thousand, five hundred dollars would be split into, uh, the total of twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty, which would be used per fiscal year and of that for this fiscal year, ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-five of those of mentoring, ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-five of those of Lake County Mental Health and quarterly checks, so there's paperwork. They send me their stats, I compile the stats and send it off, we get the check here and then we get the check back on there.
So it's gonna come through your fund?
Yeah.
We need a resolution as un, for unanticipated funds, where they come in and where they go out. That's what we're missing is where these funds are coming in at, where they're going to. This is for the agreement to accept the funds.
Yeah.
If they were unanticipated, weren't in your budget, we have, they'll take them in as unanticipated.
I understand that. We, we talked about that and it's, I just want to get this approved first and I'll get with Ann to get the resolutions.
Okay. So that's to be acted on tomorrow?
Yeah.
All right. And then you have urgent youth authority Lake County contract.
And that's the amendment, uh, it's, it's the same contract as the last biennium. The amendment just calls for the same amount of dollars, um, to be carried over from the last biennium, which is fifteen, it's on the very last page, it's fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars for the biennium. So for fiscal year, Lake County, um, will receive seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars.
This unanticipated funds also.
Absolutely.
Is it an amendment ending?
And the reason, reason it's unanticipated is we, I don't, I don't want to budget for something that the state can't, OIA or even Youth Authority and Oregon Education Department can't guarantee us. The children commission, families, money was only supposed to be for another year, they're gonna keep it around for another year, however, say feels it's important, which is good, so we've got that for another two years. And then the JCP grant, we just never know the amount of numbers, so I'm reluctant to budget what we got last year, not knowing every inch of it.
And, but you don't look at the type of this to be used to offset the cost for detention?
Yeah. As opposed to suit.
Does that say I'll suit?
This is in the wrong place. As you.
Ms. Thorsted typed that up for myself.
Well, she did a good job because she's checking, see if you checked her work, if you're gonna be presenting.
I was testing you.
And you didn't, and you didn't catch it, so that will reflect later on.
I just heard this last night on wherever you're glued, what said you found twelve million six.
We're gonna never, administrative assistant, that's what you.
Never was, thank you. So that's, so that's up to me when you review. So back to business, gentlemen.
Essentially, it's unanticipated funds that go toward detention costs.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on down, moving on down the agenda, fleet RSP purchase recommendation.
Do you want to do it during the first?
Oh.
What's the difference?
I didn't see him over there in the corner.
He's just impatiently waiting.
This is, uh.
Since I'm here all day.
This is a couple of additions.
If, if you had a pink shirt on, we would have known it.
Just, we're quick, I apologize, just one quick update.
I missed the other, I'll follow this here, we'll have to bring it back up to.
Just one quick update that I forgot to mention, on, on the twenty-eighth, next Friday, the Criminal Justice Commission will be in town, they're gonna be auditing our treatment court. I've asked them to come down because I'm writing a grant for reinvestment monies and that, our reinvestment monies fund, our treatment court, so I have asked them to come audit us and tell us what we've been working on, what we're doing good, what improvements we need to make. So Ben Wyatt, this is the criminal justice commissioner, he will be here Friday the twenty-eighth, our taking. So I'll make sure if you guys are around to bring my, your research to him. He's a Lake County boy, he's got family out on, he might have hold, he's, he's.
When do you gonna be here?
What's that?
When do you gonna be here?
The twenty-eighth, uh, August, August, this is next Friday.
His name again?
His, his name, last, first name is Ben, last name is Wyatt, 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 will be on. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with other road vacation requests first.
So, Old Wells Lane, uh, about five miles or so south of town here, there's been some discussion on where that road ends, written in, an iPad list discussion along with other employees here at the county, survey's assistant, Karen Smith, and Dave Knowles from the sister's office. There's been considerable amount of research done on, on where that road's legal description is and it was been actually documented here at the county. And then by the current property owner, title of report's been submitted and requested to, to get the legal description actually recorded in the commission general. And the road only extend to where we're familiar as, as road master feels that this road has ended all along, although assessment office has this road extending beyond where the old dwelling, um, at the end of Old Wells Lane existed and it no longer currently exists. There are a number of tax lots out there, but they're all owned by Enzba currently, they aren't for sale, but as, as, uh, this is being sold, they're not, so. That's, that's the long of it, the, the quick summary is that ORS allows us to hold this property vacation without a hearing, so what should be done at least in the public's, you know, eye and, and ears, so we can know about it.
And some of the uniqueness of this Darwin is, is everybody believes it was vacated many years ago. This portion, and this is pretty much just doing, you couldn't find the records for in the road department.
And as you look at the record, and it was good to visit with you, Dave, yesterday, this is forty-five years ago. And they just failed to either detach or leave or whatever.
This red Bible, it's what it's called, has a lot of property vacations. I hope that most of them have been taken care of correctly, I haven't taken the time to go through each of those, but this one was missed somehow and, and we're now correcting that.
Yeah.
Very old mistake and, but it's gonna be good and we'll, you know, move, move on.
I don't go back to forty-five. When I worked at the road department, we, we stopped for.
Yeah.
We were, how it snowed and everything.
September sixteenth, March seventeenth, where they finally took action to do this.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're all probably.
Should be good, should be simple.
You have, you have one other road vacation?
Yeah, one other road vacation, this one's a little bit more.
Or not one, another possible vacation, multiple.
Yeah, multiple and it's, um, something you guys have done before, adjacent to this to the west, um, south of Ninth Street, it's actually the planted, uh, Tenth Street and Eleventh Street, portions of those, as well as, uh, what would be Q, R, and S, uh, looks like possibly T as well, nope, just, um, Q, R, and S, and then alleys between P and Q, Q and R, R and S, between Tenth and Eleventh Street, um, Q Street from block ten down to twelve, the others were just between ten and eleven. And alleyways, um, it's in the record, but, but anyways, this, this is, um, being requested by Obsidian Renewables who, uh, has got a land use approval for another solar project down there, they expanded it from originally twenty to seventy. Uh, in their original approvals, it did, uh, one of the conditions of approval was that they vacate the streets once they own all the ownership. In the record, the request from, um, Obsidian Renewables says and proves their ownership of all these lots, a hundred percent again, if owned by, um, the budding property owner, they, as long as we have that in the record, and then either the road master or myself make a, a report saying that this is in the public's best interest to vacate this, we can do it again without a hearing. So that's, that's what I'm requesting and this, actually what they're requesting, but we're following, following through on.
This is an urban growth boundary.
It's just outside, so the growth boundary is pretty much the railroad tracks, um, and Ninth Street, and so this is just on that southwest area.
That's immediately south of their existing solar, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, this is actually a little bit to the east, yeah.
To the east.
A little bit to the east. And there is one, uh, property, and, um, and I, I'm pre, I, our printer's down, so I didn't print the full request and stuff, I, I've only printed the, you know, assisting documents that I needed, uh, for this, but there's one OBL lot that's twenty-five by the one hundred and thirty-five, that's, that's, uh, on, that would be R, R and S, and that that.
We didn't give any notes or anything.
Yeah, okay, so, sorry, I sent this all late because it's, I was waiting on the check and that's why it's a late addition, um, trying to make sure we.
So what about that one lot you was talking about?
Anyways, that, that OBL lot is not yet owned by Obsidian, this, this. Anyways, that, that OBL lot is not yet owned by Obsidian. This, this map shows that little jog around that. So the legal description that we will need to adopt is not to include the vacation of those last two blocks which will be, or lots on block forty, forty-two of this, you know, thirty-nine, twenty-south, section twenty-one, block forty-two. That's going to be lots twenty-three and twenty-four. They own twenty-four but not twenty-three and twenty-three needs still have access. So we can't actually vacate R and S without having a full public hearing. So since they are only requesting the vacation of those, it won't be that completely. I just wanted to point that out. We'll certainly have it in the, in a resolution, uh, order.
David, did send those maps? I just looked at my email and I apologize if I did not, did not catch.
Can wait last minute.
Yeah, I.
And I've sent it all to Jim Bailey and we'll hear from him tomorrow.
Are we going to add this to tomorrow's agenda for?
I already have.
Oh, okay, good. So we'll be able to get copy of that part.
And along with this request, it's not something that, that is going to be on the agenda tomorrow but you want to bring it up. They've, they've asked for the mineral rights in this area as well. It's really rare when we relinquish those rights and, or sell them however we want, the process goes. Jim Bailey and I have had a discussion, you know, probably a couple of years back, we had a request for something similar. I'm not sure if you guys have a good history on it, but they are requesting those, they, you know, Obsidian Renewables and the like of it. It makes the financing a lot easier and smoother if they can consider they all have a bit of ground in the ground than to say, oh, there's this little. Incumbrance. Incumbrance on the title. So anyways, that's, that's where I've worked.
Well, it's sort of, just because you brought that up, are they in a real, they agreed to start construction there. It seems like if they're negotiating to get that one last lot, I think if we wait a little while and we can do one vacation processing and then if we wanted to consider the mineral rights too, seems like they're trying to rush possibly. Could we, um, there's no reason to have multiple decisions made on the same property, I guess is what I'm.
Nice thing is that since this is without a hearing, I mean, hopefully it won't take too long. You know, they, they don't own it yet so I don't, I doubt seriously that, you know, like you say, they're, they're rushing this process but at the same time, you know, I think they're probably, they got a lot of irons in the fire and especially in terms of finances. They're probably, I can't, I shouldn't speak for them. But I, I would imagine that they're trying to figure out their financing.
Generally, when somebody wants a road vacation, alley vacation, they can be for us. It's not brought to us by our client director.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Usually the people come and make that request so we can ask them questions. And you're sort of putting them in a bad position as the director.
Yeah, I'll call Todd and, and see what he can do about, you know, that question and if he's in too much hurry. He did say he was in a hurry in the emails that I have. I don't know if I catch those.
I, I agree.
He's always.
Never, we, we all look back, it's always in a hurry. And supporting what he's trying to do, but Commissioner Lawrence is at a great point, is this just one step that he wants to take? He doesn't think about procedurally you and us and what we're doing. So if, if he doesn't intend to do it, he can tell the authorities that he has a property. It only makes sense if we wait till that happens and do it.
I can see why this was put up. He may struggle ever getting that. He may never get it. So, I mean, I think if, if he doesn't get it, he'll make a little dog around the.
What you're saying is what he should be here saying.
Exactly. But he has made this request and, and, you know, I think, I know he wants to go through the blocks quickly and he's, made the request for a certain area and that's what I presented it.
Yep.
And, and, but I will call him and ask him if, he's not going to come down tomorrow, but we're touching on the phone.
Who's picked on? So, is there any properties that join this that you consider solid, that you have other developments there that still have all access?
Yeah.
Everything, cause that's just the multiple OBL lots.
Now, they own everything inside that block now. That area that all the roads that, that, that request, they, they own.
Inside, how about roads come and do it?
Yeah, and they've left those open on the side.
On the side, okay.
So they've only done the stuff, the road inside and then where the property ends and there's another road next to it, they've left that road open.
That wouldn't be, I could screw up the other property on the other side.
Last thing would be, wouldn't you get the maps?
Okay, I'll, I was doing my email on my phone so I didn't get to the maps.
Mr. Chair, do you want Dr. Gregory to join us on the phone tomorrow?
They don't, they've been bested. Here, here, of course, I think there's more decisions, you know, if you, if the proposal usually takes a lot of questions. We can have him on the phone.
I wouldn't entirely say it's his fault for not being here today or, or even tomorrow, mainly for the fact that I, I sent this out yesterday and he found out yesterday that, you know, he had done this today. So late additions, congratulations and hopefully we do.
Yeah, it is, it's like, it's safe. We just got to make sure that public gets a chance to play the vision. It's not a hard thing to do today. They don't want to plan it. But with this type of vacation, we don't have to send out a public notice or anything, so.
Ultimately, no one's affected by it because there's still access to all their properties of this. And actually, they benefit greatly by them developing this, in my opinion, because those roads and out of those roads were existing before. And so if you now travel down to that solar project, the road that you traveled down wasn't there before. Now, properties to the east can now, you know, access that. And they'll, will probably go, you know, access road all around the outside too. It may not be inside the fence, but at least.
Probably shouldn't ask if it has no bearing. This is out of public way, that road that we.
Yeah, absolutely. That is part of, well, it's a, a part of S Street. And it's the.
Do they keep it gated and locked?
Not, not from Ninth Street down to S Street, but yes, right where they.
I'm going to have to look when I go by.
You can drive right, usually kind of.
So you made a recommendation to have Todd on the phone tomorrow?
Well, there's, there was some emphasis for further clarification of his urgency, so we might as well hear it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get him on the phone and then, you know, Jim Bailey.
So we, we need to, for her to be able to call and we probably should try to arrange a time for that.
Do you want me to work with Darwin now?
Yeah, yeah, work with Darwin and let's, let's make a time for them. I think that's it. And everything, Jim Bailey's a free unit or has?
Yeah, I, again, I sent it late, so it got there last night, last evening.
So, Mr. Bailey may say that we're active, you've asked and we may not have.
He may, but I, I mean, there are us, the laws.
Okay, well, alright, so that takes care of the two road vacations. Now we move along to the zoning department's update.
Uh, my update will be that hopefully here in a few minutes, I'm going to talk with Scott Edelman from the LCD and, and again, the same questions that we continue. No answers on would be the, I don't know if I'm a little bit into it right now, but the eighty acre farm going minimum and the hundred sixty acre. Now the state wants us to go to a hundred sixty and two twenty. That's, that's one of my biggest concerns. Certainly changes people's property rights. So we're going to have a discussion on that. He's been on vacation for a few days, so. If, you know, if, if none of those questions. The taxing issue, I think we, I, I feel we resolve the tax issue because the question was if, if we've got subdivisions that are currently zoned, exclusive farm use, and we need to switch them to a residential zone so that we're not overcomplicating something that, you know, the intent there is for, for residential use. Switching to an exclusive farm use is kind of, kind of productive on that. It really requires a lot more land use noticing the process and criteria, so.
Darwin County maybe is. Should hold up for a second. This, this is online today. This is on tomorrow.
Well, I'm looking here.
Here.
That's important.
Yeah. Tomorrow it's on if the time guide.
It's our public hearing.
It's public hearing.
You should say Wednesday at the top of your sheet for it.
Yeah.
I'm glad they're not going for that. Especially since I don't fully have the answers I'm, I'm looking for.
Well, and I think we're, yeah, going with this is in the hearing process and to have a discussion, a work session. We need to have a hearing process and our discussion with you would be after the hearing is closed.
Anything that I would have been saying right now is just, just, you know, a refresher of what we've already discussed in public hearing. I, I, because I, again, I don't have any answers for you. I mean, I've done some research and I'll gladly share that tomorrow in the public meeting on, on some of this taxation issue.
I, I think, I think it would better to.
Yep.
We'll continue that.
Yeah. Are you taking the further updates? Cause I'll give you two quick ones. I, I promise I'll be quick, less than two minutes. We have a planned commission vacancy at the end, so now we have two open spots with ballot parties. So we have published in the paper. That's one. We'll argue your recommendation as soon as we get applicants. Norfolk did ask, why are we, on the website I posted, we're preferring South County residents at this time and it's because of how we've aligned up bylaws to try to get G I draft lawyers. It just happened that these two are South County residents, you know, hopefuls. And I said, we will, we can't go anywhere we want. Um, next, the partner rec grant that we've been working on. We've got a master plan that's in draft form and, you know, it's going to come before you pull approval. I think it's the twenty-fifth of September that's been being set for that. I did send the LCD notice so that we can include it in the conference of plan.
So.
Twenty-fifth of when?
Uh, September.
I, I won't be here.
So the end's got, I don't have the schedule.
Doodle call on I, wasn't able to make it. And with that, why is it not on a regular work session or?
And, and it's not the room, so I'm going to throw a little bluster in it, but that's what she told me. So that's what I sent to the LCD as in those.
So it's for an action?
I know that, um, the outside parties involved at this were able to travel that date, UFO or whoever else was.
Those who worked on the, on the actual document itself were going to be able to make it that day. So if, I'm glad we'll bring it up now then so that we can, if we need to adjust.
She's aware.
Yeah, there was, there was a doodle call on I. I don't know if they.
I don't know. That's, that's the last date I was told and that's what I published to the LCD. But I can, we can certainly change it and, and we'll put the notices in the paper and make that all happen. The planning commission will meet first to discuss it on, which I think is September fifteenth is the planning commission, I put Tuesday.
So do you have an in draft form now?
Yeah, it's, it, the draft's out and it's, it's been, I'm pretty sure it's been sent to each of you.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I haven't had time to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty good sized document, but.
Looked.
Yeah, just review it. And then, so the planning commission will meet quickly and then give the recommendation and they're not going to change any wording in it. It's just really rubber stamped it so we can move on because we've already had those hearings.
So it's just going to rubber stamp it? That's kind of a quick decision.
Yeah, maybe, but, I mean, you guys get to ultimately say. But the planning commission, you know, it's really why the, as planning, I'm involved now in the past, I'm two minutes. I'm involved as, but those rebuttal, so, so anyways, uh, planning commission has to give you a recommendation to change the comp plan. And it's just, it's going to be a one liner that just says, hey, this document is, this document will use for partner rec purposes. So it's, the notice been sent, we'll get the dates right. The LCD has at least been informed, add this to our conference. Last thing, the LCD now has a grant opportunity out for, um, submittals for the technical assistance grants due by September thirtieth. And we'll finish it up. Because I'm transitioning right to the conference of plan for, for an update to that document. I will submit, you know, a grant opportunity for that. Hopefully we're awarded and hopefully we'll get that updated. My guess is Angelo, planning group, who helped us with Marco, they, you know, they'll probably put in an ID.
So, so a question, um, I'm actually getting there, calling out is, did you get on the C O D F W decision or P C L D or Department of Education or their decisions on, say, drafts? Did you get a copy of it or final decision?
Yeah, I've got a copy of it all. I believe that both have already now gone into effect. Where I will ask that question of, of Captain Daniels with the LCD on how we can apply that, maybe to the Marco, you know, of your quick insertion into.
I've got that, that comic they sent in.
Okay.
I never got enough data.
Yeah, alright, I'll, I'll go for you.
Allen Dale, Chip, Chip Dale.
Yeah, Chip Dale.
Or, or Jimmy Davis or anything of any of the recommended changes. I don't know if they've done any of them. A lot of time spent.
Yep.
Yeah, assuming all three of us. I was trying to give both of them, I wanted not the other.
Okay, yeah, I'll, which is amazing.
Alright.
But I'm setting you know, but follow up.
Yeah. One of them told me that they wanted to go in and back to tenth August, but I saw something else saying that the commission or the Secretary of State of whoever, actually might be sitting late September.
Okay, but that's due to me then. I thought the other one went on.
I need to dress, I need to find that in my email bucket.
Alright, well, we'll.
I got a few to talk to you on.
So instead of two minutes, you went four minutes. So you've got two minutes off your paycheck.
Okay.
Alright. Mr. Hall, we're doing our next addition, which is law enforcement agreement. Definitely just doing the addition, law enforcement, addition, cooperative law enforcement agreement. So, hold on. Give us a moment.
So this is new to me. I've never heard how my hand in this picture jar before with, um, working on this interregional agreement with federal law enforcement side. Basically what this agreement allows is that the sheriff's office will help if we have a emergency road closure due to fire issues. For instance, like when we had the Berry Point fire a number of years back, the sheriff's office is responsible for maintaining personal safety and keeping people out of the fire area. And so this agreement basically allows the, the forest service to reimburse us a negotiated cost which is forty-two ten an hour on straight time and sixty-five, sixty-five cents an hour on overtime. So I, I had received this, this portion of the contract, I believe July thirty-first, no, excuse me, May thirty-first. Well, I don't know when I received it. I thought I had it here. But I, I responded back to Connie Morts at the, um, Interagency on July eighth and told her, I've got a copy of that if you guys would like it. But basically I, I said Connie, Lake County intends to continue with the contract terms that were previously outlined in the two thousand and ten agreement. Please see the table below for wage scale information. Sheriff Taylor's not available, so in his absence, I will be acting as sheriff. If you have any questions, feel free to call me. And so it was my assumption that this, this contract would move forward. And so now I have received that contract with updated two thousand and fifteen. In the interim, Mark Suba, who is the L E O for the forest service here, came and talked to myself about some additional funding that, that would be available for the sheriff's office to pursue. It's five thousand dollars, so it's a set amount and we can bill hours to get reimbursed for that amount of money up to, but not exceed the five thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm not, this is brand new, so I'm not real familiar on how that process is going to work or if it's going to work. It has nothing to do with the travel management. It has nothing to do with us out enforcing per se forest service rules and regs on the forest outside of what we normally would do. What it specifically refers to is during the extreme fire danger that we would provide additional time in the forest for those specific reasons, trying to keep people from doing things during those severe dry conditions to. to not start fires, basically. So that's kind of what I know about it. I'll try to answer questions if you have some, which I'm sure you do. I was actually kind of hoping that Daniel stuck around for this part, but he was here on his own time, so.
Well, Paul, I think, you know, you're saying we're uncertain as to what all these things are, and rightly so. I think since the Forest Service initiated this, it would be good to have actually heard from them because putting a limit of five thousand dollars on emergency situations makes no sense to me.
Well, it's not, it's not, okay, so maybe I misrepresented what that is. The five thousand dollars is addition, in addition to any billing that we may do to this other contract. This, so Exhibit A is, this is all brand new. It's never been in Lake County before, and that is limited to five thousand dollars, and that specifically states for fire enforcement, if you will, on the forest. This portion of the contract is an intergovernmental agreement that we will provide, and they will reimburse whatever the costs are with no limit and no max on these. And these are also Title III eligible. So any, any road closure that we do on the forest or forest fire, and we have deputies out there doing manning road closures, is all Title III eligible. So those, those are paid through two thirty-four.
That's for road closure, standing fire.
Correct. And then it would be reimbursed at the end of the year, which I, I don't know if you guys remember or not. I think Lake County received about forty-one thousand dollars back to their Title III that we had paid out for the Berry Point Fire for road closure stuff. But I wanted to be very, very clear with everyone that this five thousand dollars has nothing to do with the Sheriff's Office enforcing the travel management plan. The sheriffs have very clearly spoken statewide that they are not going to do that. So this was just very specific to.
On page two of A, it starts patrol activities.
Correct.
And it's, it's specific towards increased fire danger. And Paul, my question is, and you know, analytics already asked for this is, we, we go further and further out into the forest, and that is part of Lake County also. I don't mean it to sound like it doesn't. But that takes our road deputies off of the more populated areas as far as Christmas Valley, Lakeview area, so to make something on and on to leverage five thousand dollars. Is it, is it worth it, I guess, for five thousand dollars to go out and see if people have campfires? An example I used to you was the state forestry's out there doing that, the Forest Service are out doing that. And then where the triplicate of going out, you know, fire watch?
Yes and no. I, I agree, and I actually spoke with Commissioner Kessner's son yesterday about this. Five thousand dollars isn't very much money when you're paying out wages and benefits.
And the paperwork too.
And the paperwork to get reimbursed. However, my unknown in this is, is this going to turn into three times that amount next year? Is it going to turn into fifty thousand dollars in the future? I think, and because this is brand new, it's, it is an unknown. I know I spoke with Clamath County. They receive, I believe, fifteen thousand dollars on the same type of thing, and they're providing basically the same services that they've been providing in the past. My thought on it is, it would be an opportunity to recover five thousand dollars of costs that we're already absorbing in our agency that we're doing on a day-to-day basis. For instance, fourth of July weekend, we were called to Lofton, we were called to Campbell Reservoir, we were called to, I believe, Palmsen.
This is very specific drug enforcement, fire emergency, group gatherings.
Absolutely.
So we, we could go to a normal call, which will get called on most amount of time. I'm not sure it fits this.
Well, let me, let me finish.
I'm sorry.
In those instances, there were drugs involved at each one of those occasions. There were domestic violence calls, and there were drug use there. In my opinion, that does meet this. And my next thought on it would be, is what is a group gathering? Is a, you know, three families out camping in the woods? Is that a group gathering?
I always said, you get a definition in here, on page four of A.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Under special enforcement situation.
Lot concerts, demonstrations, so.
Who would probably be engaged in those anyway, do you know?
Well, it's, it's, the way I take the group gatherings, there's spots authorized by the Forest Service. Probably similar to burning a man down in that desert. There was one up in Norfolk one time.
Right. That was on B L M, but yeah. So I, I have a couple concerns about it, and I, I, I would have probably rather talked to you guys individually prior to this. But one of my concerns is, is that this is a first step in causing local law enforcement to have to start enforcing federal law for pennies on the dollar of what it actually costs to do these, these things. We are already responding to probably somewhere between fifty and a hundred and fifty calls a year on the forest that we're providing law enforcement support. I, I'm not, I'm not sold that, that that's what this is, but I'm not certain either. And so I don't, I don't know. I'm a little bit uncomfortable with it because the workload that associated with it, it's a small amount of money for the services that they would like, and the cost recovery is gonna be, I, I, I don't see that this supplements our budget enough to, uh, for the hassle that it may cost.
Well, Paul, I'll just way back in here again. I, I saw what the activities were to the three that patrol. They've got a lot of stuff in here, and I, I agree, the five thousand for most of these activities, it, it just seems strange that they've got that limit because they're the ones requesting and then sending this home. But the fire emergency stuff itself, because it goes on, on this page three, the top patrol activities associated with increased fire danger, that's one aspect. And below it, it says, the reimbursement for this category, shalotic seat five thousand. There needs to be a little more clarity on page four, where it says fire emergency. That's actual fires. That, you're working with incident management teams. It's not an increased danger. It's an actual activity which is already covered. It, it feels like, without having totally absorbed all this, like they've put in things that shouldn't be in here because they've covered somewhere else. And there is no limit on that. As long as they're requesting the services of the Sheriff's Office, they're paying for it under the incident, under the emergency funding provisions. That's why it'd be nice that if you have to try and answer these questions about a document that they wrote, that someone from their organization was here to answer it.
Well, in, in defense, this was something that was added yesterday at about four o'clock to the agenda today, and so I couldn't organize that early open for years to be here to ensure I understand.
And the reason it was added, because it was a notation of.
Right.
Prior to twenty-fourth August, it could be jeopardized.
Correct.
So it took me to the discussion.
So I apologize that it's in this form and that I'm not well versed and educated on this situation, but.
Can you have somebody before us tomorrow? I can sure try.
Well, Daniel is the one that, that is a corporate administrative contact, so he's one of those probably the, the force service on this.
And I don't think anyone's worked with anyone on this. I think Daniel is. I think the two names have traditionally been here. It's been Daniel and Bill, and now they're changed, and so I don't know that Daniel has any more information, but, but you would have more familiarity with what's happened in the past and what the intent of this is.
Look, apart from the fire emergency, we traditionally have provided road service as far as keeping people out of the fire.
Correct. Which this is completely.
The five thousand is different.
Something different, yes.
It's in addition to.
So what, when I had actually responded to Connie Morts, it was only about this corporate agreement that's been in place for however many years. And so I told her that we wanted to proceed with what we've done in the past, and we, we evaluated the wage that was there. That's exactly the same rate that we are reimbursing B L M, and so I left that rate alone. This, Exhibit A, was the add-on to this, that I'm not, and no one here is clear on what exactly it is.
And if their law enforcement, if you will, is privy to this, is part of the writing of this, then you can answer those questions.
Correct.
Not, absolutely. Their contract, you know, whoever developed this agreement, they want us to sign. It's probably the only one who can answer this question.
This, Daniel Smith, I see, he's acting District Ranger over in Clamath right now. He's a law enforcement advocate, but he's acting District Ranger.
Okay.
While the current district rangers are detailing. I need to chat with him because he's who it says, contact, program manager contact. I met him the other day, and he's quite a sharp person.
I guess we're on that, Paul. If this will cover some of our costs whenever we go, go out to the federal agent, whenever there's a call, maybe the backup that we get those call quite often. If we can reimburse that, I'm pretty supportive that if we're going to be out there looking for campfires and campgrounds, I think there's people with that specific expertise that it's not law enforcement should be doing.
Well, and I feel like we are already spread very, very thin of what we have to provide just to comply with what we're supposed to be doing. And to add this in addition for that amount of money, it doesn't, it's not enough money to backfill another deputy so that we can provide that service. It's enough that it's a carrot and a stick, but I don't know if the carrot's worth the, the strain it puts on something else, I guess.
And the only contingency there is.
For about next year, or coming in. Right. And, and I don't know if this, like I said, I don't know if this is just a, a trial and see what they get out of this, and it may increase or it may go away. I mean, I, I don't know the answers to those questions. I, I sure wouldn't want to pass it up at five thousand, and then they authorize fifty thousand next year or, you know, for a Biden or something, and that's a miss out.
Now, earlier you said, we respond fifty times or so, but obviously we're gonna, at a minimum of fifty times to national forest lands. And that's on our, our dying, yes, with no reimbursement. Does any of this coincide? So we are dying, except we can reimburse five thousand. But would these items be fifty times plus additional?
That would be additional.
And they don't qualify for Title III reimbursement on the fifty times that we respond to the forest because they aren't emergency declarations. I mean, they're not fire qualified as the Title III expands.
But what I, if I stay focused on the five thousand dollars, what they're wanting to do is patrol. We're not talking about, I, it's not responding.
Absolutely.
This is designed for control. And it says right here, which one means control for, and five thousand dollars type of their control, would we have, if there are problems and enforcement problem?
Well, but I think that there's a, I think there's a caveat on here is, is if our guys respond to Lofton or a call that they're gonna have to take with or without this five thousand dollars. If they go to Lofton, they take care of the call, and they return home via Dog Lake, and they check three campgrounds on their way back to town, I believe we can bill that entire time on the forest to this five thousand dollars. So in that regard, it could offset some of the general fund exposure for the forest coverage plan.
And basically, let's say over a period of time, you have five thousand dollars and over a twelve-month period, and you expanded five thousand in month two, then that, you're not obligated thereafter, after you deduct the overhead costs.
Well, we're often, we're oftentimes making contacts, W T tag spends about forty hours, thirty hours, I guess, this week, making contact with animal hunters, and that is eligible for our B L M contract. And so it's a dual serving. We're making contacts for multiple purposes, and we get to bill that for our B L M contract. I don't know why this would be different if it was deer season and we're on the forest checking hunters at camps. I don't know why that could be, you know, we're verifying that they're using whatever safeties are in place for the fire danger at that time of year. Why that could lead to this five thousand dollars as well?
Well, you're bringing up a good question. Is it, I'm really trying to understand this because to me, it's, it's two different sets of requirements. If the five thousand dollars is only for patrol activities, and I don't read it that way, but if it is, then why all this other stuff that's in here? And when your example, you just started to use, Paul, are we free if we sign this to determine landing bill? We can go out patrol, and we can see if deer hunters, do we know that? I mean, it's, it's up to us. It's not at their request. But going back to this patrol activities, yeah, it spells that out really well there. Then it goes into Section Three Training, then Equipment, then Special Enforcement. At the very tail end, under D on page seven of A, it says, any remaining funding in this annual operating plan may be carried forward to the next fiscal year and will be available to spend through the term of the quality of law enforcement agreement. So to me, everything leading up to there is part of this, which is also things that are emergencies and the emergency fire situations, and it's gonna exceed five thousand dollars. I just, don't, don't take this wrong. You're just the messenger, but I think they, for me, they need to explain this whole new agreement of what, what they're willing to do here.
The overtime rate, it's eighty-three point three hours over five thousand dollars. And so you add a third more to that, so you're talking at ten hours per, I think that's straight line. I wonder, Paul, their holiday rate for the federal.
Well, and, and quite frankly, if we're gonna have to do extra patrols for this, aside from our normal duties, the only time this will be done will be on overtime because it'll be on guys that wanna come in on their day off and go out patrol forest. That's, I mean, that's the bottom line because the, we don't have enough resources as it is to do, I mean, we're covering a lot of ground, doing our normal, what we're mandated per statute to do, and there's not enough bodies to go around to go send somebody up to Lofton just because we want them.
Well, and I appreciate that, because that'd be like a D U I grant or whatever, Paul. And I, so that'd be eight days out there, eight, ten-hour days that you could offer for somebody to put extra time in. But if they make contact and they give a ticket or whatever, then you got the core time, and then you have other times that, that just sort of get embedded into our day-to-day operations. But truly, it's a, it's a cost that should come off this too, which probably isn't allowable. But you, you have a good chance out there to run into pretty major things.
Yeah. Well, and you may run into something that you're not working for. You know, I mean, I may went out there to check. You know, I mean, I may went out there to check fire, you know, fire restrictions, and, you know, run into a marijuana grower, or, you know, that turns into two weeks of work.
Well, the other thing is under the reimbursement stuff, just as a point, the forty-two-ten includes salary, employee benefits, and administrative costs, our normal collections of employee and that cost. Then there's an overtime rate, then the meals and incidentals not to exceed seventy-seven dollars, and meals and incidentals forty-six for daily rates. Nor does it talk about our vehicles.
Right.
And that's huge. If you just use the fixed federal government rate of fifty-seven and a half cents a mile, if nothing else, if you were.
Good point.
Paying for that, two hundred miles in a day, if you're out there patrolling and doing activities from one end to the other, that's a hundred and fifteen dollars.
That was the rate that Sheriff McDonald negotiated some time ago, that forty-two-ten includes.
Well, it does, in their agreement, it doesn't include that, and more importantly, when you negotiated that rate to pay on a fire emergency reimbursement through Title III, you're talking about at a fixed point, you're going out and providing roadblocks and those types of services. This agreement is dealing with patrolling, being going wherever, and there's no compensation for it.
Can you talk with Cameron County and compare notes of what their agreement says and how they pose a concept of that?
I just don't know that the money, the money amount, probably.
This is, this is what was cut and pasted out of the previous two thousand ten contract. And it stated right here, this is what was negotiated prior to the cost per mile patrol, this factor that comes into consideration. That's what Sheriff McDonald had in place prior to this being written. I see what you're saying is not listed in theirs.
Well, and for this part of the agreement, that's probably fine, I don't know, maybe, maybe not, but this is totally different, I don't.
I don't see how you could factor it into that, because you don't know how many miles you drive a day. I mean, there's only one point five million acres on the forest.
Well, can we accept the standard agreement for fire emergency, we may only do what we typically do, and not accept the other?
I believe so, I think we could opt out of.
Two separate agreements?
Yeah, I think we could opt out.
Page eight of nine is the signature page, and then page eight.
Seven of eight.
Seven of eight.
I'm trying to see a clean separation between the two.
Well, yours is stable together, but at the bottom, it starts out one of nine, and then that ends that pack, that section, and then one of eight.
But this, the one of eight starts out as exhibit A, so it makes you think that it's part of this.
And it may say that in here, that Exhibit A is attached. I don't do much of doing anything today. Yeah, performance in accordance with the annual operating plan attached is Exhibit A, it's on page two of nine. Not performance, performance accordance.
Is that a timed thing tomorrow?
No, it's not.
We made an addition yesterday, I think.
I know, but I just didn't know if we had squirted it in for tomorrow's. So can you give me a time, and I will try to arrange to have one, if not, some of their folks here to answer the, I'm afraid, it's about two hours.
Urgency was that one email by the law reader said.
Well, and tomorrow in the meeting, I will ask the board to move forward on that. The cooperative agreement that we have done all the, for years and years and years and years. I guess the question should be answered tomorrow by their folks, if Section A or Exhibit A, I mean, it has a separate sign sheet, so my understanding is, like Mr. Schall said, it's a set of a thing that we can opt in or out of, and so tomorrow, I would like the board to move on this and get it submitted and sent to them for this cooperative agreement.
Paul, as you're looking to get things clarified under, on page two of nine of the first document, the annual operating document, at the very bottom, it does say under A, perform in accordance with the annual operating plan attached as Exhibit A. So even though there's two different places to sign, that the end of Exhibit A tells us this, it's saying if we sign this, we're agreeing to Exhibit A, so we need to get that clarified too.
And get it to Jim Bailey also, for his opinion.
All right, I apologize that I didn't have more.
That's okay, I thought you put it on the agenda tomorrow, because it's an urgency of the twenty-fourth. But having a discussion is, you said, yeah, you know, you have the end of the day tomorrow.
So, Paul, the original agreement, you mentioned something earlier, that on that paper you showed that the wages are inclusive of the mileage. I don't like that at all, I think Dan brought up a very good point. Fuel is still very expensive, even though it's less than what it was two years ago.
Right, but the way that it was explained to me by the sheriff is, is an actual deputy's wage is about thirty bucks an hour. That's a loaded cost, and so we're adding essentially twelve dollars an hour onto every deputy hour that we're... So rather than having to track and bill that fuel, or track and bill that mileage, he was including that in the.
And I would disagree with that, only in the sense, if we are gonna collect our actual costs and be a good neighbor, let's collect the actual costs. If it's thirty-some-odd dollars fully loaded for an employee, that's fine, and then forty-five or whatever for overtime. And then, let's, if we drive two hundred and fifty miles, let's collect two hundred and fifty miles at fifty-seven and a half cents a mile, so we actually get.
And that's the rate we acknowledge?
Yeah.
Whatever the rate is, and both agencies acknowledge those rates, so it really should, I agree with, it should be easy enough.
It's a little bit difficult to track.
It's easy to say I've gotten on my speedometer.
Well, it's easy to say I've got three guys out there and I'm billing for these, this many hours. If you've got five vehicles out there, and you've got people going different directions, and you've got these miles to count for, the accounting side of that is more labor-intensive at the end of the day to come up with that cost. So he was trying to capture it in that wage cost, because I'm already accounting for that anyway, that this person worked eight hours.
I would say whenever he travels, uses his own rig, it's too hard to keep track of it and everything, so we might as well just give him a flat rate, no matter how many miles he drives.
Ten dollars.
Yeah, ten dollars, yeah.
Twelve. Ten on, ten dollars per hour on my wages, I take that.
Well, it takes four hours to get rid of them, so that's forty dollars, that's a lot cheaper than twenty-seven dollars. I think you came up with a good point, Paul.
I think we have a good point.
Need to populate it overnight today, get some opinions, make a decision tomorrow.
I can see where the sheriff was sort of going on that too, because if there is an emergency fire and you have a rig sitting there that's not putting miles on it, and to get there, and it's twenty miles from town, there's a value to having a rig there. Also, I understand your accounting challenge that you're seeing, because there's a value of just that piece of equipment. I know that the Forest Service has a value, their pieces of equipment, so I think that's probably some of the reasoning, Paul. If I get back to be serious after giving you that.
Well, and typically, what we're performing, like for the very point fires, I mean, I went out there and took them fuel, I took them things, took them generators, they had lighting, but literally, that's what it was. They were driving the vehicle out there, and they were parking, and they were stopping traffic going on, they weren't driving all over the forest.
It's almost like two different issues, the value of it.
That was what I was getting at, was that this new attachment is a whole different volume.
Right, no, no, I fully understand what you're saying in that regard.
But I pull back to the agreement.
But, and I guess I didn't do a very good job of explaining myself either. That's what was in this original cooperative agreement, that Sheriff McDonald had done a number of times, this is brand new, and so.
Right.
They, I think they just took it on themselves and said, this is what we're gonna do in this new one as well, and I think, I agree with you.
But it's completely, not to beat this horse anymore, Paul, but it says in here, in what they wrote, this rate includes salary, employee benefits, and administrative costs.
Self-negotiation time.
Yep.
And we've heard multiple times, administration takes a good lot of paperwork to go through.
It takes hours to even figure out what it means, so you can imagine what it'd be like to submit billing, so.
But the baseline is, once you have gathered five thousand dollars, then you cease providing that specific service.
Or if we accept it and don't use any of it, the way that the contract reads is that five thousand we carry forward into next year.
Yep.
My thought was, is that five thousand will only go this far, and it will be exhausted. And my hope was, is that next year, instead of five thousand, it was ten thousand or twenty thousand.
So with all of our discussion and everything, what's your recommendation after you get to, you all get more information, or right now, what would your recommendation be?
My recommendation would be to think about it a little bit more.
I thought that's where you would go. Well, it's time-sensitive.
No, it's time-sensitive, we have to make a decision by the twenty-fourth. So I'm gonna, I'll get right on this and start trying to call their folks and see who I can get here in front of you tomorrow that can better explain, or better negotiate, or.
Get somebody either here or on the phone, because they got their jobs too, but either one.
And Mr. Bailey has a copy of it, you say, you already for review?
I thought Mr. Bailey and you folks had it about three weeks ago, when I received it.
It came in the email, I haven't read it, if it is.
Picked up yesterday afternoon, and saw the time list and so on, so wanted it, that's about four or seven.
So I guess what I'm, I'll talk for me, if you research and get everything clarified that you're comfortable with, I'm not sure that I have to have somebody else come, I don't, I'm just sort of speaking as one.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay.
I don't understand it enough, I haven't had enough time to really absorb this and understand. I know a few of the commissioners have been related to the government at different times, and they may have a better understanding than I even do, but I know that very much so, they're very into paperwork, and there's probably a lot of things in here that should be clarified that I can't answer. I mean, I don't even have all the questions to ask the people, so I can come here and clarify.
Well, their new fiscal year starts October one, so I'm not gonna pick this back up right now, but perhaps this agreement is just for another month, I don't know.
Okay, and I don't know the answer to that either. And because it's for, specifically for fire patrol, my guess is, is I'm hoping to be through fire season, and once they send their seasonals off duty, they're declaring that fire season is essentially over, is that correct? Or fire seasons, you're right?
They won't send their seasonals until the play of fire season over.
That's what I mean, but that may be, September, it may be October, but.
Yeah, they lose a lot of seasonals just because of the workforce that they have, but anyway.
I would suggest calling Klamath, finding out who are there to get some prep knowledge before you talk to the Forest Service. They might feed you ideas of what's there after you would inquire to the Forest Service.
So after you get, find out the information, make sure legal counsel has a copy of it. If it needs to be a timed thing, work with Denise today, she'll, if somebody that has to be here, and they only have a certain window, you have a couple periods tomorrow, or a phone conference or whatever, you might have the time to call. That's a nice fast half hour.
Well, I thought I'd carry you guys right into lunch, so, was I the last thing? You got more?
And me, I'm last.
Oh, okay.
And I, Eric.
Oh, I guess I'm the last one.
Might as well just sit right down there.
All right, thank you, Paul, and appreciate the board having so many questions, which it just doesn't seem like a whole lot of money for what might be required. Our next item, fleet RFQ purchase recommendation, Denise Thorsten.
Last week, our RFQs for the purchase of the four vehicles approved during budget time ended on Thursday night. We, Paul and I, have discussed what was presented for the F-150s. At this time, I do not have a recommendation for the F-150s. They, upon discussion with the two dealers that did submit RFQs, they don't even have exact pricing on the 2016s yet, so they're not even able to order the 2016s yet, which likely will not happen until probably the first part of September, which puts the delivery of those vehicles to us mid-November, depending. Then they have to go to the show's department, they have to go for ETL, so that would put those vehicles into our fleet probably first period of January, to be honest. So we have asked the two dealers that did supply us with boats to see what they could find in 2015s. And one of the dealers has supplied those, I've given the second dealer until the end of three to date to get us any that we could find who's searching. So I do not have a recommendation on the F-150s at this time, but hope to, for tomorrow's discussion. If they do come up with two 2015s, we do need to move on those very quickly, because they will be sold prior to our next meeting in two weeks. So I'm hoping to have something for you tomorrow. In terms of the other two vehicles, one is an S U V for the juvenile department to replace their Jeep, and the second one is to add to our pool vehicles, since we have a lot of demand. Both of those are Explorers. Our lowest bid was received from a local dealer, Home Motor Company. So my recommendation is to go with Home Motor Company.
Well, what year are they?
2016. Yeah, and there's tiny young noses in the white cars, stuff that's tall, just because they don't have to be F-15s, they can order those now. But that plant is set up in the next year.
Okay, losing a year of munis, is it, have we evaluated that value? You know, a few years, a few months in delivery, I understand the price they have here, but we're also buying a year-old rig. And I don't know if we're buying potentially a brand-new rig right now.
I don't know that until I see those rentals from the second dealer anyway. I will tell you that the first one was not substantially less than, actually was possible, than the 2016s, so we'll see, we'll see what we get.
But this year in particular, we're gonna need to get those vehicles onto our deputies that we're.
We are, we've got, the two vehicles that are being transitioned out need to be transitioned out, so.
The only other thing that along with what Mr. Bailey was saying, I actually had that discussion too, but the most of these sheriff's vehicles are surplus and really down to someone below them. I didn't see the required cost association with that, for buying a year-old vehicle in November as opposed to a 2016, and that. If we, if we drive that vehicle and operate it for three years, and go a hundred and twenty thousand miles, and then goes to search an estimate, rise there six years later, and then be auctioned off. then the auctioning off, I don't know that the newer or older comes in the quote.
Well, I, I don't know the answer on this.
I totally agree with you, when I'm talking about some of the costs.
Right, right.
That if it's a year old, there should be some reduction.
I agree.
But I am maybe, we should seize some savings, they're high too.
Keep it posted on that. My other RFQ, my second item that's on here, was for the purchase of two vans, those were vans that were already through the wires.
I never, my question back. Do you look for the specs, make sure that they're both exactly the same, they're exactly the same, they're all the requested specs?
When we went out for the.
Why would we have an issue with specs? Just that we're trying to pay attention to what the people are asking for.
Yeah, I think that was the year before. We have done that, we did compare side by side as best we could with those. On the 2015s, when we asked them to search those, we asked them to search vehicles that either met or exceeded what our RFQ was, just, we know we're running that time.
So if I have my choice, it comes in with my specs. So just keep an eye on the specs, make sure they follow, follow requests.
Okay. Hey, you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one, I also do not have a recommendation on the vans, those are to be paid for with our available units that we received, the wires are on the 233. We got those specs late Friday, they review on Friday at five o'clock, so Andrea of the senior center is reviewing what we've received, determining which one is the best fit for their use. All three of the vehicles that we received, we can't specify for Chevy Dodge, whatever, we just have to put out the, you know, what equipment we need and how many passengers and basic stuff. All three of those vehicles are different vehicles, so I have told her that she, you don't have a blue sheet for me, because I don't have anything, I don't have anything to give you on that one. She is reviewing to see which ones are gonna work the best. That recommendation I made out for the next two weeks, it's time sensitive, so I'll know more this afternoon, but I just, I don't wanna be rushed to get the wrong, wrong vehicle for their needs, so I wanna make sure they can write purchases.
Three of them.
Okay, so that's all I have for the RFQs. My last one, ODOT has requested that we have in place a reasonable modification policy. Basically, what this does is it states that Lake County offers equal and effective opportunities for access within our public transit program for elderly and disabled, and that we are following all the state and federal regulations for this program.
So this draft was put together by the state, basically?
Correct. That was forwarded to me from ODOT. It has been reviewed by legal counsel.
Can you question more on reasonable modification policy? That's on for tomorrow.
I don't know why I halted so long, I did mine in four minutes ago.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't believe I missed any of the additions.
Nope.
Department updates. Nothing there, liaison updates. Anybody wanna kick off?
No, I'll kick off. The Lakeview Community Partnership is a nonprofit, I'm serving on the board of that, not as county commissioner, but as a private citizen. They've gone slowly, but the whole intent is to help revitalize downtown. We see we have a town crew working over there now, on that subject.
So maybe I just now clicked with you, that's a nonprofit that's Lakeview specific?
Lakeview Community, and that's why I'm saying I'm not there as a county commissioner, I'm as a citizen.
I, I, I thought when we talked quite some time ago, that the Economic Development Group was getting reorganized, that we used to appoint people to, this is completely separate from that.
Well, it's, yeah, they form their own 501(c)(3) board and director.
That helps me, because if I was molding it together as Economic Development Group, that we used to appoint the board members and all that, I thought that's what you guys were putting back into existence here, six months ago or whatever. This is Lakeview specific. Who points to people, they're nonprofits, they have their own board?
Yep.
Okay, that helps me for understanding.
Couple weeks ago, I mentioned that the North Lake Health District is wanting to contract with the La Pan Community Health Center to provide services at the North Lake Clinic. The, La Pine had an open, open house session that went to, mostly as an ambassador to show support. In fact, they was quite pleased, I was thinking that there'd be some of the North Lake folks there, but, you know, show. Other things going on, last Thursday, I dropped in on the Klamath Lake Forest Health Partnership Group, this little nonprofit also, been in existence since the nineteen nineties, they kind of regrouping now, and working with the Forest Service on some of the projects around on the forest. I think they have a great potential of collaborative working with the Forest Service, because they're looking at landowners interspersed with the national forest. From there, I went over to the Oregon Department of Education, Regional Collaborative, Regional Achievement Collaborative Summit, which Bob Nash and I went to, and that collaborative, they call it a RAC, is, basically, it's a funding grant mechanism to give counties or communities to enhance education in an economic fashion. Lake County is one of a small handful that have not taken advantage of that. What Bob Nash and I are looking at is preschool. How can we come up with a grant proposal to this group, which is due next Friday, not this Friday, but next one? He's still just working on getting that grant together, but somehow to enhance and further our availability of preschool across the county, which I think is of economic benefit itself. People coming here, they want to know that they have preschool, and it gets, and also it's good for our kids and our future community leaders, to get some prep before they go to kindergarten. The biggest obstacle there is cost, and that's what we're looking at, a grant to get a prep start. Tomorrow afternoon, on Iberdrola, they have this piece of property out there, and they pretty much let their quality from that, they pretty much backed out of the, what's called the, the Moll mass, the left to go generation, with Red Rock and Iberdrola, there's not enough Moll mass out there. But Andrew Biscar, the main contact, is coming in town tomorrow, and he wanted to meet, and it's not really the same lot, but it has to do with what they can do with that property they have out there. So I'm gonna rope Darwin, 'cause it's the land use and everything, and be with Biscar before our ten o'clock meeting, and maybe see what they got at their shoulders. At least they're still looking at doing something out there, which is always a possibility. There won't be the Moll mass, but. Caught note of this thing in Baker City later this week, this Coordination 101, remember when a couple of forest suits ago, in the travel management, I had a little inkling of what that coordination is written into FLIPMA and other federal laws, but really didn't have enough knowledge of it to force, Forest Service to actually coordinate with us, if you remember how that went. But it's a three day, and one of the main speakers is Brad Kelly Grant, I met him seven years ago, at the National Forest County Schools Session down in Reno. But he's putting that on, and it's very intentional, eight o'clock, five, four o'clock, three consecutive days, I'll be able to bring back materials, and I have a greater information on, on coordinating, because that leads up to another thing, as you know, I'm on the cooperating agency with the Fish and Wildlife Service Refuge, and September, we're gonna have another meeting. So I think in Baker City, maybe a positive thing in working with Fish and Wildlife, except I'm not sure if Fish and Wildlife Service is covered underneath FLIPMA, 'cause FLIPMA is, they're under their own, but still, it's information that we can use most.
I'd seen that come through, they have a lot of speaker and everything, I, I must have, I molded it into similar to when they had a meeting down, for everybody to come to, and what I, what can you do against government type meetings, and on the productive side, so I didn't, I didn't really engage too much equally.
I get that same sense with this Brad Kelly, and another person from, my answer is to take the positive as opposed to the antagonistic negative, lean out the positive benefits in that on negotiating.
So Commissioner Kestner, when you read that, 'cause I read it too, and I thought as far as the three of us, and, and as it relates to me, but FLIPMA, Coordination, so on and so forth, that's kind of in your wheelhouse, so do you think perhaps you could teach this?
They're gonna have a, a book, and my thought is that book comes back to here, share it with you guys, but after I leave this office, that information stays in our office. In other words, if any of us go and do something, gain information, I doubt how, the next day, we'll either bring it back and make it perpetually useful. And that's what I have.
I'd be short and brief, the one thing that, that really, Commissioner Kestner, you wasn't, you was at another meeting, but through the SCOAC meeting last week, finally got an absolute that on Connect Oregon Six, that if it's a county project, that I will have to declare a conflict of interest, and won't be, even have the opportunity to be able to be appointed to the final review committee. Up until then, I can still take it through the Super Act, through all of that, when it comes to the final review committee, that's appointed by the ODOT director, I would have to declare the conflict of interest.
And that would be applicable to all the counties.
It would be.
But you can't say.
I can say no, which I would, and then would probably work very well with the Commissioner from Clive County, that I'd be sending it to table.
And if they have a project, they're setting out and use.
They only get to point one, so if we both, I don't think Clive County's putting a project in, that is only the county itself, so we have two railroad ones, possibly two railroad ones that can go in, that we have that leased out, questionable, I probably should build, it would be there. We put in for an airport one, that is county, that'd be a county application, and you can't pick and choose, because they feel like that you would be trying to manipulate the situ, situation or the process before you got there. Truth of the matter is, is everybody's staging and working every angle they can anyways.
And they have to watch out for the district's county commissioner.
Big deal, so, so anyways, that's really the only update I really, as always, I'm still working with Jeff Mannerneck in the town, and, and others, the natural gas, and on the Red Rock, natural gas, using the meeting the other day, with Regional Solutions have pulled together several, several people that can be associated with the natural gas, associated with the million dollars Regional Solutions, was awarded, reduced by eighteen percent by the state legislature, which is eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so that's continuing on, that's a process.
Did you happen to have told Susanna to find out about the invitations to that?
No, I have not, I.
I, I started to send her an email, and I love that.
I gotta be perfectly honest with both of you, I've been in animal hunting mode, and I probably have missed a couple emails I needed to get out there.
Okay.
Oh, the one other update I did wanna give, is both of you know, I've been working with OHA and others, just on the concept of the Thomas Creek Works Center, and trying to find a way to preserve that for the future. Foz met with OHA, Craig Foster from the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, they are, they, and OHA is interested, I'm gonna try to set up some time, there's quite a process through the Forest Service of whatever avenue would be to take over the, I, I guess, primary thoughts of maintenance and upkeep of it, to preserve it, but there is interest out there. That led to my question to Daniel today, if there was a charge for Thomas Creek Works Center, what a great place for there to be a function like they've done for search and rescue, or be a command post during a search.
It's a facility that's not being used, and you need to capitalize on it.
So, I was sort of thinking, you know, you ever do know if there's emergency management dollars that could go towards it or something like that, if it was partially used for that, trainees and everything, so. Anyways, just outside the box, thank you, and anything and everything possible, sort of a fun thing to sort of be a part of, once we get into the bureaucracy of government, and how hard it might be, and I've been cautioned on that by Air Force Soup, which is very appreciated. It's not easy to do, it's not easy to make happen, but I'm working on it, any ideas, any support, anything outside the box or inside the box? Talk to me, Dr. Foz, talk to Connie, it's a good pepper to pepper to make this happen.
It's probably a good thing to stop there.
Yeah, it probably is. One thing that Thomas Creek Works Center signed is pretty ugly and old, I'm gonna send it to Mills Street Paisley, hang it on that, I think it's a white fence in front of that house.
Did you copy that, Denise, ugly and old?
The sign, the sign.
Yeah.
It's vintage.
It's vintage, so that's one of those things that we work on, and fill in in between, it takes a lot of time, that could be very good for our community, hopefully. With that, I guess my scent is still a very nice analog, I'm still holding out for one, so you guys won't see me much the rest of this week.
Right, you'll be here tomorrow.
I'll be here for the meetings, and then slipping out in the afternoon after I do some emails and stuff, and going after one specific one.
You're passing up those for one.
Yes, yes, so that's not important to county business, other than I will not be here as much this week as long.
A lot of rest and relaxation, that portion from there.
Now, it's frustrating, heck. Go ahead, Dan, do you have any?
Nah, that's fine.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right, let's get forward with me.
We'll adjourn at eight minutes after four.